Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for attending tonight. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Tuesday, February twenty 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 four. We appreciate all of you being here tonight and for those of you watching from home. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell has been excused. Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Member Lorisella.
Here.
Member Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whelan.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Well, thank you very much. Tonight, before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I want us to stand and provide a moment of silence and remembrance of the loss this last weekend of retired Army Lieutenant General William Bill Harrison. As most of you probably know, Mr. Mayor Emeritus Harrison was Lakewood's first mayor and served as mayor from nineteen ninety five through two thousand and three, completing his service on the city council in two thousand and five. Mayor Harris was Harrison was instrumental in so many things in this city, including the initial drive for incorporation. And upon incorporation, he was instrumental in leading this city through its early infanthood when the city had to go about the process of starting from scratch, hiring its first employee, developing a municipal code, establishing council policies and goals to deliver municipal services to a city in its infancy, and so many other things that he was able to do because of much due to his leadership and his ability to work with people. He was a consensus builder, and he worked very hard to build consensus, not just with the other council members, but with the citizens and the community as a whole, to figure out what it would mean to be a newly incorporated city with a new desire to have public safety as a priority, and all the other things that comes along with a non-full-service city, infrastructure needs, parks' needs, recreational opportunities, and frankly, trying to figure out where to place the City Hall. And so we owe much debt to those who've come before us, and certainly much honor and gratitude goes to Lieutenant General William, Mayor Emeritus Bill Harrison. So as we stand, let's pause and give a moment of silence and remembrance and respect for his service, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. Again, we begin our meeting with the proclamation and presentation section. And tonight, we are honored to recognize the Clover Park School District Daffodil Princesses tonight. And I'd like to call on Chai Hill from Clover Park High School, Leilani Campos Ramos from Harrison Prep, and Patricia Page from Lakes High School to join me at the podium. Welcome.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for coming. So wonderful. Nice to meet you. Well, just a little bit about the honor to be bestowed on these bright and wonderful young ladies. The Daffodil Festival is a nonprofit organization that has been officially operating in and around Pierce County since nineteen thirty-four. One of the most important aspects of the festival is the selection of the Daffodil Princesses. A group of twenty-three high school seniors are selected to the Daffodil Royal Court. These young women travel throughout Pierce County and even to the legislature in Olympia, where we hope they gain much more progress than we're able to do. At their various appearances and events, they represent their schools and their cities and towns. The women appointed to the court are selected for their inner beauties, scholastic achievements, and their positions as leaders in their respective communities. The young women selected to hold the title of Daffodil Princess spend their senior year dedicated to this program. In the process, they learn valuable lessons, including building self-confidence, networking with notable community leaders, and developing key personal skills that will benefit them far into the future. We congratulate these lovely, young, incredibly bright ladies, Chai Hill, Patricia Page, and Leilani Campos Ramos, and wish them luck as they work toward earning the Daffodil Queen Title. So on behalf of all of us here in the city of Lakewood and the members of Lakewood City Council, we appreciate your incredible service and look forward to your year. And I'm going to present these certificates of recognition for your selection as a Daffodil Princess and for representing Clover Park High School, Chai Hill. This goes to you. There you are, Chai.
Thank you.
Leilani. For you. And Patricia, here for you. And if you'd like to each collectively or individually say a few things, then we'll have you come on up for a photograph. And we're just honored to have you as part of our community. Thank you for your service this year and for participating in the program. Deputy Mayor and I, and perhaps some others, had the opportunity last year to judge. I don't know if you judge this year, but it was a great opportunity for us to watch and observe the incredible poise and ability to articulate positions that all of you present when you go through these competitions. It's a great skill building, and we appreciate all that you're doing. So represent Lakewood well.
We would just like to thank all of you guys for recognizing us, and we are honored to serve our community. Thank you.
Well, the next presentation and proclamation is certainly one that is bittersweet for many of us. This is a proclamation recognizing Michael David Buhr for his significant years of service to the city of Lakewood. So while I just received a pin about time to shine, David, I think this is your time to shine. And if you join me up at the dais, the council will honor you with this proclamation. So just a few words, and then we'll begin the proclamation with Councilmember Branstadter. But I believe, Mr. Buhr, it was sometime in two thousand and six when I first started my volunteer service through your mentorship and trudelage as a member of the Planning Commission. And through the years that we worked together there, and certainly for the last fifteen that I've been working here in the city council, I can say from my humble perspective, unequivocally, you have been one of the most impressive and dedicated public servants with whom I've ever worked, and I appreciate it. So it is an honor for us to present this to you tonight. And we'll start off, Councilmember Branstadter. The city of Lakewood provides this proclamation in honor of Michael David Buhr. Mr. Branstadter.
Whereas, Michael David Buhr has served the city of Lakewood for twenty-eight years with distinction and professionalism since the city's incorporation in February nineteen ninety-six, demonstrating unwavering commitment and remarkable leadership. And whereas, Mr. Buhr's meritorious municipal service totals forty-five years and demonstrates the highest level of dedication and excellence to the planning profession. And?
Whereas, Mr. Buhr has served tirelessly in the role of Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development, contributing invaluable expertise and passion to the advancement of the city. And whereas, under his guidance, Lakewood has seen significant advancements in community development, sustainable economic growth, and urban planning, contributing to the city's prosperity and the well-being of its residents. And?
Whereas, Mr. Buhr created and executed various long-range and strategic planning policies that has helped shape the city and its growth, ensuring a balance between growth and the preservation of the community's unique character, and encouraged public participation in the city's development process. And whereas, during his tenure, he spearheaded numerous initiatives aimed at enhancing the city's economic vitality, attracting businesses, fostering job creation, improving the quality of life for all residents, and providing sound and honest guidance throughout his exemplary career with the city. And?
Whereas, his extensive experience in current and comprehensive planning, the Growth Management Act, military and civilian growth and coordination to include crafting a land-use zoning scheme to protect the operations of JBLM and the safety of Lakewood's residents, environmental analysis, housing programs, code enforcement, and building code administration have left an indelible and significant mark on our community, making it stronger, more vibrant, and better positioned for future success. And whereas, Mr. Buhr championed the expansion of safe, decent, and affordable housing for Lakewood residents through various programs and initiatives to include the establishment of the rental housing safety program, and having established relationships with trade associations as well as affordable housing and manufactured housing advocates and champions to help the city's most vulnerable. And?
And whereas, Mr. Buhr has been a longtime leader in tribal relations within the Skali Indian Tribe on behalf of Lakewood. And whereas, he has worked diligently and collaboratively with state agencies, regular local utilities, special districts, nonprofit agencies, charities, and faith-based organizations to maximize partnerships and collaboration for the betterment of Lakewood and its residents. And?
And whereas, David Buhr has proactively developed environmental and climate change policy for Lakewood, putting the city in a leadership position as state legislation is now being developed. And whereas, Mr. Buhr has been instrumental in the cleanup of countless properties citywide, working across city departments to make way for positive redevelopment. And whereas, his dedication to excellence, integrity, and public service has earned David Buhr the respect and admiration of colleagues, community leaders, and the residents of Lakewood alike. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby expresses its sincere gratitude and respect to Michael David Buhr for his dedication, character, and professionalism during his many years of service to the city of Lakewood. And we congratulate him for his years of devoted municipal service, proclaim this twentieth day of February twenty twenty-four, all of us here in the city council. Well, Mr. Buhr, the honor is certainly ours. We have asked Mr. Caulfield to rip up your retirement papers until we get our city park done.
Okay.
So, but we'll let you have at least this moment on behalf of all of us again. So much work, such a fine, incredible public servant. And I know your retirement's well-deserved, but you do have an opportunity to say a few words if you'd like. We had a thirty-minute video of your years here, but we will reserve that for another time. But?
I'll just say a few words.
The floor is yours. And then we'll take a photograph.
Okay.
Thank you all. I didn't mean to stay this long. I expected to be fired in about three to five years once getting here. Alice Bush, who was employee number one, is present this evening, and I was employee number ten. And she and I were reminiscing some of the things that took place in that first year of incorporation. A little-known fact, after the first year of incorporation, they celebrated my fortieth birthday, and we nearly burned down City Hall. We had a cake with candles that wouldn't go out, and a very low ceiling, and the fire department got nervous, and we ruined the cake. But that was some of the early incidences. I really didn't have an office. I worked out of bathroom stalls on a laptop, and that's how the city of Lakewood was initiated. I want to thank my parents, because I'm surprised I turned out this good. There was a lot of personal sacrifice that they made to get me to this point. And I also have to recognize my wife Carolyn, who's sitting off to the left. She and I were reminiscing some of the other places I would have worked where I would not get home until midnight or one a.m. And the newspapers were calling and wanting to know what was going on. And then I was the conduit by which they got the story ready for the next, next day. So it's been a bit of a partnership. She will tell you that I've worked too many hours. I stopped counting the thousands of hours at evening meetings because it just got lengthy. Nevertheless, I did try to give my best and my all for the city of Lakewood because it's deserving of something better. And I'm hoping that this council and future councils will continue that. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that opportunity to speak. And that's it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Buhr. We will certainly honor you with our coin. We're going to take this back and frame it for you. But we'll honor you with our Lakewood Challenge coin, cooperating together for the betterment of Lakewood, which is something you have spearheaded for all of your years here. I just also want to recognize in the audience not only Alice Bush, good to see you, Alice, Andrew Neiditz, the City Manager, prior to Mr. Caulfield, with whom all of us worked for a number of years, and many of your friends and family here today. So thank you. Join us up front for a photograph. And ladies and gentlemen, let's congratulate Mr. Buhr. Mr. Neiditz, did you want to say anything while David's here? You're certainly welcome to. I think your former boss wants to say a few words to you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm not accustomed to being in this room without talking, so I always appreciate you inviting me to talk. And what I prepared is only like forty-five minutes long, so it will take up most of the evening. Seriously, though, in my forty years of local government service, I've not known someone as committed and dedicated and unique as David Buhr. So I certainly agree with what you said, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, about the unique contributions that he has made. I always knew, when I worked with him as Deputy City Manager for three years, and then I worked with him as City Manager for eight years, I always knew he had been here from the very beginning. And I heard tonight that he started in February of nineteen ninety-six. So the rumor always was, you know, did incorporation take place before Dave Buhr, or did he actually show up here ahead of time to maybe to cause it to happen? Of course, as was stated, Bill Harrison and others were working hard to accomplish incorporation. But with David as one of the first employees to make it all work, it made such a tremendous difference. I know this is as sad a time as we remember Mayor Emeritus Bill Harrison, General Harrison, and all the contributions he made. But Bill Harrison also had a great sense of humor. And one of my recollections from the early days, Dave Buhr is not a golfer, nor am I. So I'm the last person who should make fun of someone's golfing ability. But Mayor Harrison had brought a group of city people to what was then the Fort Lewis Golf Course for some sort of public service-oriented event on the course. And of course, David was there with his lack of golfing skills, but I think he swung at a ball, and I believe it actually hit General Harrison. And as I recall, General Harrison turned to David Buhr and said, "Mr. Buhr, we don't do that here." And that was the general way of knowing that David was not about to be court-martialed, but that he needed to modify his behavior. But his contributions went on for all the years that he's been here since nineteen ninety-six. And as dedicated and committed and competent and hardworking as he is, he's also very opinionated. And when I became City Manager, even though Dave and I knew each other, his being opinionated, because he always let people around him know what his opinions were. And when I asked him to become an Assistant City Manager in two thousand and seven, it was because he was so damn opinionated that I needed to have him in the inner circle, and I needed to have him on my side, because I knew how his opinions were free-flowing pretty much all the time. And that was one of the best decisions that I, a City Manager, ever made, was to recognize the role that he played and would continue to play. And I'm so pleased that Mr. Caulfield has continued Dave and his role since that time. And so all I can say, Dave, you've done a great job. And the city of Lakewood is so much better off today than it was when you started, and so much of that is due to your effort and your work. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't ask employee number one, Alice, if you'd like to say something or save it for another day. I know we're doing another recognition for Mr. Buhr later. Yeah, come on up, Alice. Feel free. It's good to see you again after these years.
Dave will be greatly, greatly missed. He's done so much from the city. We have so many memories together at the Fun Factory, which is what we called it. It was always, you know, who was going to turn off the lights. But anyway, I have appreciated Dave over the years. And yes, he is free-flowing and speaks his mind all the time, but in a good way. So thank you, Dave. I will miss your work in the midst, and I know everyone will miss everything that you've done, you know, for the city. But I'm glad we're good friends and will continue to be so. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming and for helping us celebrate the service of an incredible public servant to the city of Lakewood. And so, David, again, thank you. And thank you, Carol, for letting us borrow him for these many years. And we look forward to a robust retirement function here later on, I think this month or early next. So this month, I believe. So thanks again, everyone, for giving us a little bit of leeway from our normal course of business tonight. But it's certainly important to recognize people who have done yeoman's work in the service of this great city. So next, we turn to the public comments section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk at six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address at bshumaker@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically. I did see at least one that came through today, but the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance from Casey Crook.
Thank you, and I did see that. Members of the audience may comment on items related to city business in this public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. If you have signed in to speak, or if you're going to be speaking via Zoom, again, just please state your name and residence for the record, and then you'll have your three minutes. Virtual comments, as indicated, are allowed. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by dialing the telephone number two five three two one five eight seven eight two and enter the meeting ID number eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. And then upon entering the meeting, please use the raise the hand feature to be called upon. And I typically call upon people in the order which hands are raised. So I will first call on those who have signed in on Zoom or are raising their hand on Zoom to speak. And then that will be followed by those who are here physically in chambers and have signed in on the sign-in sheet. So first, we have Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. This subject is something I've watched for many years and watched even in two thousand and eighteen. But I really think that your police department and your schools are going to be under a tremendous amount of increased pressure from foreign criminals and what they bring into the community. Just a few months ago, twenty-five or yeah, twenty-five governors- Just a few months ago, twenty-five governors agreed to help Texas fight off the thousands of people coming into the country. And tonight on the news, it said that that has kind of changed the flow northward to start in California. And so that means I-5 will be probably increased very much with illegal activity, transporting illegal activity, transporting fentanyl and whatnot. And that's going to be a tremendous challenge for the schools, too, because fentanyl is often gotten in the schools and around the country. And somebody dies or gets killed or gets handicapped for the rest of their life. But I go back to, I always thought it was a bad decision. And I remember when the state, the state, between two seventeen and two nineteen, finally got a law signed into effect making it a sanctuary state. And that, of course, is, the problem has increased. And some of those cities on the West Coast are getting so full that the mayors who were welcoming all these illegal immigrants are now crying. It's almost like listening to a baby, "Help, help! Our streets, our hotels, everything's run over." Well, the flow, in an increased way, is going to be coming in your way. And what I could never figure out is why there were never any mathematical type questions asked. What are you going to do with the people? There's seven point five billion people in the United States, you know, that many of them want to get in here. And there was never any mathematical planning as to what are you going to do with them? Where are they going to work? Where are they going to stay? Whether they're going to be checked to be if they're criminals or not? So anyway, it's a warning, but I'll be watching very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Christina Manetti.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Good evening, everybody. Christina Manetti, Gary Oak Coalition, Lakewood. If the city really wants to increase its tree canopy and protect Gary Oaks and other trees, it will have to significantly improve its policies, which now lead to the exact opposite, the suffering and death of countless trees. Here are some recent examples. Death by ivy. On Brook Lane, a Gary Oak measuring fourteen inches in diameter was cut down in early February, having started to collapse under a huge amount of invasive ivy. The oak was well over a century old. Others next to it still have ivy on them. By failing to require that property owners eradicate invasive ivy as other jurisdictions do, the city is facilitating the incremental decimation of our rare and supposedly protected Gary Oak canopy. The city is also contributing to a net loss of critical areas since even single Gary Oaks in urban and urbanizing areas should be considered a part of those as the new state guidelines stress once again. The new Growth Management Act stipulates that there should be no net loss of critical areas. But the city doesn't even bother to consider all of its critical areas and cuts down oaks even on its own public right-of-way, as on hipkins. Death by asphalt. The city is complicit in the oak's suffering and demise as seen at the Remi property on Gravel Lake Drive. The spared oak's entire critical root zone has been asphalted over, something that should never be done. The roots will not receive enough water and will get roasted under the hot asphalt during the summer. In oaks, this suffering might not be apparent for fifty years or more, and all of us will be dead by then, or at least most of us. These Gary Oaks, hundreds of years old, will suffer and probably eventually die as a result. If the city wants to truly protect its oaks, it should require that the critical root zones be kept free of asphalt, which would also mean depaving the areas around the oaks that are currently surrounded by cement or asphalt. Death by library system. The library system, despite the public's pleas, has cut down the entire native Madrona Grove that has been groving, growing, growing for three decades at the former toxic waste site, which is now the temporary library site on Gravel Lake Drive. It left one Madrona on the other side, but has allowed heavy machinery to park and drive on its critical root zone, which should never happen. As a veteran native plant expert has said, "The destruction of Madrones is inexcusable." The city needs to have more stringent policies regarding the protection of native trees. They are the basis of our local ecosystem. By killing these trees, you are killing the life that depends on them. And eventually, this means us humans, too. Why does the city of Lakewood continue to allow our special precious native tree life to be destroyed in this way?
Thank you. Next, James Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Barely. Can you hear me now?
Better.
Better, okay. So my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I really want to have any particular topic. Like Christina Manetti, I've been sort of watching the development of the sort of temporary library site, and I've seen the single Madrona tree. You know, it makes me think, again, why Lakewood has been allowed itself to be abused by the Pierce County Library System. You know, Lakewood doesn't have a library. It's lost a ten-foot building. We're seeing this replacement library. I mean, you know, I did suggest that you de-annex. And I know that the one member of the city council who had any slight enthusiasm for de-annexation or even would think about it has gone. But I still think that you should consider it. I think if you had threatened to de-annex or just talked about it, discussed it, given the people of Lakewood a chance to vote on it, you would have found that the Pierce County Library System would have been much more cooperative. So I think that is a missed opportunity. I would guess that in ten or twenty years' time, when you look back on your decision to ignore the de-annexation, not consider it, I think you will regret that decision. I think it would have been very important for Lakewood to get back its identity. And I think that the fact that the Pierce County Library System is, really has complete disrespect for Lakewood is illustrated by its attitude to that big slice of tree, which, you know, which is such an important part of the city's heritage. And I believe it's under a tarpaulin, and no one really knows what they're going to do with it. There's suggestions that you might put it under some kind of cover, perhaps in Silicon Park. But, you know, it's going to get destroyed. And I think, you know, that just illustrates the contempt that the Pierce County Library System have for Lakewood and the cutting down of the Madronas. And I know you're not going to de-annex. But I also know that, I'm pretty sure in ten, twenty years' time, you're going to regret not de-annexing. Of course, one doesn't know what a library is anymore. And I suspect in a hundred years' time, people will still call it a library and it'll have nothing to do with books, and it'll have something to do with, oh, I don't know. I suppose, I suppose, I suppose, a big part of the libraries, librarians have become social workers. And that's really what a library is all about. And maybe it's the right thing to do. But maybe you do need to reconsider what a library is. Books are now going to be, perhaps be something completely digital, and one doesn't actually need a building to read a book. But I don't know. Somehow, I do think you missed an opportunity. Anyway, thanks very much for hearing me out, and that's it.
Thank you. That's the last hand I see raised to address council virtually during the public comment period. Madam Clerk, do you see any other hands raised?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Hey, very good. I'll go to the sign-in sheet. And again, if you didn't have the chance to sign in, you're welcome to address council during public comment. Just queue up at the dais there. At first is Jonathan Garcia.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Garcia. I'm a resident of Lakewood. Wanted to take a little bit of time down here. I'm speaking on behalf of Lakewood Baseball Club and All Things Baseball. Recently took the helm there and, excuse me, wanted to chat and talk about a little bit about the city's role in helping baseball stay going for the youth. And thank you, guys, for a couple of big things that are going on. Last year, we had two hundred and fourteen youth play baseball in Lakewood, and that's a lot of families impacted. We're a five oh one three C nonprofit. Like, we're very locally based, we have volunteer board, volunteers working as coaches. And I just wanted to take a minute out to say thank you for the updates that you guys are doing over at Fort Silicon. Those are huge in trying to build equity for our players, for what they need to be able to play on a field. One of the problems we've had historically in Lakewood is that we would be absolutely shut out from playing baseball in the spring for long periods of time when we get rainstorms. So the fact that you're able to put those turf fields in, that's a huge game changer for us. And the other thing I'm really grateful for is that you guys have different pricing that really, really helps to keep it affordable for the kids that are in Lakewood. Sometimes when cities put together new fields, they won't always think in consideration of how that impacts the youth, and they'll end up getting priced out if they're local. And so I just want to say thank you for making that a priority and also for realizing that these improvements make a big difference for our community. You're a kid, you show up, you want to play baseball, and you camp for three weeks straight because it's raining. That's a bummer. We only had four heroes before. So this spring will be pretty special when that gets opened up because we will schedule tons of games out there. They'll be able to play and they'll do it for a low cost. I've always said that I don't want baseball to be just a rich kid's sport because it easily can turn into that with travel ball. It could be five, ten thousand dollars, and a lot of families can't afford them. And so we're able to provide baseball for significantly less. You know, I mean, our T-ball was sixty, sixty dollars this year for registration. Our most expensive was our fifteen U, and that was three hundred. But again, compared to five thousand, six thousand, eight thousand, it makes a big difference. I'll leave you with this. I just finished coaching over at Lakes High School for several years. I was the program director. I ran the whole entire program as the head coach of the varsity program. And I got to see the kids that came through the program. And we're just really grateful because what we're able to do with this enables the kids to be successful in high school. And I know people get upset about things, but I just wanted to say thank you today for that.
Very much appreciated. Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Merzalini.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abraham Merzalini. I'm a resident of Lakewood. I'm here with regard to our home that is condemned by this council, except you, Mr. Pearson. You are excluded from that because you did not make that decision. Hopefully, you are an element of change and for a good. Another waste that this council actually decided to do for a house that so many hours of labors, engineers, among others, they built it when this city was not here. And yet, this council decided to condemn it because it doesn't like what it has happened before it was established. Going back to that, exactly a month ago, the judge decided that, yes, this council could abuse its decision to do what it's decided to do. And the judge actually uncomfortably went to the land to explain it. He even brought an example of it, how it has been abused. Speaking of that, speaking of that, this council has never been willing to listen, only has been willing to dictate. And whatever it doesn't like, it doesn't like. Maybe it's not informed. And maybe those who are supposed to inform it are doing it a disservice. But regardless, it doesn't reduce its responsibility, nor it discredits whatever it does, for wrong or right. It is important that this council look at it that if one waste over a million dollar, two million dollars, maybe, just to put a parking there next to the park, next to the lake, and pollute it, and have a den of a criminal over there, and disregard the will of the people who are living there, their safety, their security, among other things. Unfortunately, when I talk to the people, they are not really happy with you. I am very sorry to hear that. But really, only one person in all of this time spoke highly of, he said, "I never had any problem." But even that person has a problem with this issue. And I don't know how to explain it to you, but you have not been listening. You just wanted to do whatever you want to do. When I hear somebody says, "I voted for this city to be created," and I truly regret it, it's, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That is the last individual who's signed up to speak, but that doesn't preclude you. If you'd like to address council during the public comment period, feel free. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Dustin Reed. As of July last year, I'm a resident of Lakewood. Myself and my wife moved into a community off of Addison. I just want to say, as a new resident, getting to explore Lakewood and see it from a different side of the, a different point of view and explore the backside that is not often known to people outside, I've really enjoyed getting to familiarize myself with this community and become aware of some of the programs that the city provides. I want to say, as a new resident, the postcards that I received from the city of Lakewood have been great to integrate ourselves into the community. And as the middle housing legislation begins to take effect, I look forward to seeing how the city develops. And there are mixed feelings on that. And I would love to help educate the community because I think that it is a very sensitive subject. Developing and changing the infrastructure of a city can definitely take a toll on the residents. And so I look forward to seeing how the city progresses and learning more about what is going to change in the coming year.
Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. I don't see any others in the audience. They're anxious to step up and address council during the public comment period. Thank you for coming tonight. Public comment will be declared closed at this time. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. C, motion number two thousand and twenty-four dash fourteen, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Olson Bro ProVac for vector cleaning services. D, motion number two thousand and twenty-four dash fifteen, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with McDonough and Sons, Inc. for street sweeping services. E, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Two, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Three, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Four, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Five, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Six, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Seven, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Eight, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Nine, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. And ten, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Is there any member which requests that any item be removed from consent agenda consideration at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Brand, said that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven ninety-seven, amending Lakewood Municipal Code related to fines and forfeitures for parking.
Thank you. And this begins on page 48 of our packet tonight, and we have our city attorney, Ms. Walker, to provide an overview based on our study session and what's before us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney. And yes, we had quite a discussion last week, and I will tell you, I think we got off on a little bit of a red herring based on some of the questions I got over the week. So I want to put something in very clear perspective. I hope that whatever questions came out during the week that they were adequately answered. But when I talked to our police officers, the issue for them is not the volume of the problem. The issue for them is that someone will complain into 311 and say, hey, there's a problem in my neighborhood. And they feel ill-equipped to answer that problem. I'm not saying what the right answer is. I'm just making sure you understand that this may not be about whether there are hundreds of cars. This is more about whether they feel like they have the tools when there is such a car. Um, so the real question here is whether or not the council wants to pursue consistency and clarity. I think everyone agreed that there are inconsistent penalties for the different types of parking offense that we talked about. And then the second question and far more, the subject of discussion for the council was whether or not there is an incentive to follow the law and not park where you're not supposed to. And so the concerns were with whether or not impounding was going too far and a concern with whether or not the amount of the fine was going too far. What's been presented to you does not include the penalty of an impoundment of a car. It includes four layers of fine. So on a first offense, you would pay $50, on a second offense, 150, third offense, 250. And all subsequent offenses would be 500 apiece. When we looked into the question of how much um, payment do we get? What percentage of people are actually paying their fines? It's hard to tell based on the data that we have right now. We're piecing together data from both the police department and the municipal court. And so it looks like some people pay and some people don't, which I'm sure you're all thinking, okay, why did she even say that? Cause that's not much of an answer. That's as far as we've gotten at this point. I would be happy to try and answer any questions the council has on this matter.
I just have a clarifying question first, and then I'll open it up. On section one of the proposed ordinance, there is language in the last sentence of subsection B that refers to, in the event that parking enforcement action must be taken more than three times for the same vehicle, the city may impound such vehicle in accordance with state law. Is that?
That's your city attorney missing part of a sentence. I tried to go through and remove that from each one. What each penalty section should say and what you would be voting on absent an amendment would be first offense 50, second offense 150, third offense 250, fourth and subsequent 500, no impoundment.
Got it. And that's consistent throughout the proposed changes.
And as an optional code city, um, that could be something that we would simply take care of as a scrivener's error.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing it out. I was trying to comb through and get every one of them.
No problem.
Apparently not successful.
Very good. Questions? Mr. Branstad, any questions? Anyone else? Mr. Branstad.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Walker. I, I, I guess my question really is uh, I appreciate the clarification that we weren't talking about people ignoring tickets or gladly paying them because they thought they were a good deal, which was candidly, the impression that I got from the study session was how the problem was being phrased. And I would even agree that, that having some consistency in terms of the level of fines and that fines should be some combination of a, a level of fine that would affect vehicle owner behavior and that would be enough so that um, the administrative cost of processing an infraction uh, or at least being uh, being recovered, although not looking for it to be a, 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 a revenue source for, for the committee. Uh, and, and I guess so, so it comes down to a question of what level of fine is going on? And because we don't have any data, it looks like we don't have any real data that indicates parking fines affecting behavior or conversely, not affecting behavior. That um, what we don't have is any data that would be, have been helpful to me is looking at the parking fine structure of some other cities that perhaps have some history that they could relate and, and, and tell us wh- what level of fines actually have they discovered and have, have, have made a difference. Um, so I'm, I am here tonight, um, wondering how long would it take for us to actually solicit that data from some similar communities of size for us within the region to see whether or not they have had some successes in the, in the, in the realm where we're trying to go?
Well, we could certainly put it in alongside the other priorities and gather information for you. What I would tell you and what I think I've been articulating tonight, probably not as well as last week, is that your officers who are on the front lines of enforcing this are asking for the tools. And so as much as they might appreciate what is working in other cities, um, one of the things they talked about when I was gathering data, trying to get information from them as well as information from our courts about who's paying and what's the experience is. They see the complaint from a citizen through 311. They go out and the citizen is unhappy that there are cars parked on the sidewalks in their neighborhood. And they have to try and track down who the person is, and then they try and have a discussion with them about, hey, maybe you don't want to be doing this. And they're feeling that it's not being taken seriously because the hammer at the end of all that is $30 in some cases. And so we can gather the information from other cities and I will tell you, um, I did have a discussion with the city manager today about maybe we take more time, we gather more data and so on and so forth. And he uh, did ask me to consider whether more data is the thing that's going to work here. Is this something that what other cities do is going to change the way our officers feel when they're trying to answer the 311 calls?
And, and, and again, in a, in addition to trying to find some, some information about how effective are fines in this sort of a problem wherever is um, the area that we were talking about of citizen complaints, they're recently, they're surfaced around parking on sidewalks, particularly the new multi-use path sidewalks that we, that we built. But on the other hand, uh, you know, the other situation is, is that uh, we haven't considered what the role of signage might be in terms of posting areas of, of no parking, which would to which is in the, in, in the element of signs, there's something, is something that is designed to do behavior and particularly if you wanted to post a a sign and in the sign also noted that it was a tollway zone. You know, you'd be, you, you're on much firmer ground when, 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 when you're, when you're dealing with someone. And, and we have some areas in the city where we have posted no parking and tollway zones together. I'm not sure I totally understand the, the rhyme or reason of why they are where they are, but that goes on off and for instance, 94th Street, there are three blocks of 94th Street that are parked like that along the back fence of the Pierce Transit property. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, I can tell you that, that they posted no parking and tollway zone and uh, I occasionally travel that street because my Lions Club has a storage yard down that street. And uh, and I don't see people parking on that side of the street because I, it's a, and, and the only deterrent really seems to be, be the signage. I, I think uh, it's interesting that our, that our, that our our frustration is with getting voluntary compliance in response to 311 complaints. It isn't really so much a matter of of the tickets to be able to go and do that. So um, yeah, I, I guess my, 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 my question remains if there is some other data that could be gathered to bring uh, an ordinance back that provides us some input as to what really is a good consistent level of fines. Uh, you know, I would be much prefer to be taking action on an ordinance of having, having that data than sort of guessing, which is how I, how I, how I see that, that this was, uh, you know, we don't seem to have that going on. That, uh, I guess my last question to, to you is um, the issue of people parking on those sidewalks. Okay. Or sidewalks anywhere, but particularly the ones that are wide enough to actually have a whole vehicle is is, is that ongoing problem? And anecdotally, I've seen it, a few of those uh, creating a liability issue for the city by not having them posted and aggressively enforced?
Councilmember Branstad, there's potential liability. We're going to be named in most anything because we're the deep pocket. And then defending on that, we'll, we'll go to the question of what's our overall duty? If we've um, allowed a situation to persist, we have all kinds of different priorities that we're juggling on any given day, and that's what the defense would boil down to. I will tell you that in addition to the sidewalk issue, every summer, and you all know this, there are parking issues at the parks. Um, North American Lake Park and, and some of the other parks in the city. And that is another area where the, the LPD kind of has its hands full trying to get people to comply and, and, you know, park the way they're supposed to and all of those different things.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Laura Sullen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, thank you for coming up with a proposal that matches what we had talked about as a group last week. Uh, an escalating fee schedule or fine schedule makes sense to me. Uh, and I understand that some members of council expressed uh, discontent at having uh, impoundment as an option. And I, I can see where that would be an issue uh, if for instance, someone who lives in their vehicle, uh, you're taking away their home, right? And we don't want to do that if we can avoid it. My concern is if we have people who are refusing to pay the fines, whether it's a $20 fine or a $500 fine, what is the incentive that we have for them to stop violating, violating the law as we have it put in place? Um, with that said, I, I appreciate how this is presented. Uh, and we can always come back at a later time, uh, if we find this is not effective. If we were to bring this in as we do and revisit it and look at other options. Thank you.
I'll ask them. So what, oh, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one of the topics or one of the questions that was asked last time was about comparing um, the uh, comparing the cost of the um, parking fines to, you know, how, how does that stack up against other uh, you know, a speeding ticket? You know, we don't want to be known as like the, the parking ticket city where you get a parking ticket and it, you know, it's five times more than a speeding ticket or something crazy. Um, so I, I've, I've kind of almost come around to being more like, okay, we're talking about wanting to simplify a parking fine. Maybe we just make it one fine, you know, one fee, come up with a fee that makes sense, 100 bucks or 125 bucks. And you get four of them or five of them, and then you get towed. Instead of escalating, you can post, you know, a, a dollar sign on a, 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 you know, a dollar amount on a sign. And that's what the ticket's always going to be. And you get a few, you know, you get a handful of those and, and at the end, you know, there is a hammer. Um, but at least the hammer's on a longer leash, I guess, um, than just the three strikes and you're out uh, situation. So um, I don't know, I just, I'd liked a, a bit more, you know, information on, on really, how does this fine stack up against other fines? Are, you know, is this really? $500 for a parking ticket seems pretty crazy, but um, I, I understand we want to, you know, charge something that's you know, strike some fear into people, I guess, if you're going to be parking on the sidewalk. So um, the other, the other thing, after reading some of the information that we got this week, um, you know, that is, I, and I kind of, I, I echo Mr. Branstad's, Councilmember Branstad's comments about, you know, it, the picture was painted a little bit fuzzy, I guess. And so but now I, I understand it a bit more that we don't really have, you know, uh, this huge problem going on, but there really isn't, you know, anything to actually enforce the problem. So I appreciate clearing that up. And um, so I, I I would like to get, uh, and instead of having to, you know, go through a bunch of amendments and things tonight, get something cleaned up that, you know, we can work on in a study session and, and collaborate on a bit that uh, kind of get some consensus before we try to do a bunch of amending to, to something. So.
Within there was an answer, was a question about uh, what the typical speeding ticket runs. On a typical infraction calendar, it runs about like 125 to 139 per ticket. And then um, if a fine isn't paid, typically it'll, it will get sent to collections. So that's that version of a hammer.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Then I'll turn over to Mr. Bokey. Just a question, logistically, assuming the council adopts the ordinance 797, how easy is it for our code enforcement or our police officer to track whether the Chevy Nova is a first offender, a second or a third? Do they do it by license plate number? Or how do we track it in our system?
They can do it by license plate number. What I'm hearing from the officers is that once they can figure out the owner of the car and actually contact the owner of the car and know how to get something to the owner of the car, um, they recognize the car. They know, they know Lakewood. Our officers work in this city. They work in their sectors and they, they know this stuff. When it becomes a persistent problem.
Well, I, I get that, but I'm just trying to noodle in my head, how are we going to be fair in terms of the tracking? Is there some sort of system that we can annotate, you know, vehicle license to Joe Smith?
Once you know the owner.
X12345 is been ticketed once or twice or whatever.
Um, and it's probably more than you want to know, but once you know the owner, they can look up.
Oh, I've been in the vehicles. You can, you can find.
Find out whether you've been speeding.
Yeah.
Whether you've been driving intoxicated, whether you've had other criminal charges, whether you've had.
So we would put it in that system then, arguably, whatever. I forget the name of what it's called, but when I'm in the ride along and we plug in a license plate number, up pops name, a nice photograph, hopefully it matches the owner of the vehicle. Uh.
I think one of the only charges they might not see there would be photo tickets.
Okay.
I think photo tickets stay off your record, but the other stuff they'll see.
Second question uh, is the signage that Mr. Branstad mentioned, which I was thinking in my mind as well. When I'm traveling around places and I look for places to park, the, the places I try to avoid are those that are well signed that say, don't park here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, or you will be towed or whatever the, the language is. Do we have an opportunity to do that in these particular areas that have been problematic? We have an opportunity. Will we do it? I guess is my question. We should put some signage up.
You are the legislative authority for the city and what would happen is uh, you would want to have a discussion about, you know, having that happen. It, it doesn't happen through the legal. you know, having that happen. It it doesn't happen through the legal department or the police department, but obviously it would be a resource allocation. There could certainly be a lag time. If you were impounding vehicles, you're actually required to do signage. But there's nothing stopping you from other types of signs. We would want to look at the sign code and so forth, but there's not a reason that you can't put up signs.
Especially in the problematic areas. They don't have to be littered throughout the city, obviously, but if there are a few known problematic areas, that might be a good first step is to put some appropriate signage up. Okay, I'll go to Mr. Bokey, and then I'm going to call for the motion because we did have staff come back after the study session to provide us what we asked them to provide. So, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Uh, thank you for getting the impoundment out. And and I I think that was really important, and for me, it was very, very, very important. I I am with Mr. Pearson in that I I'd really like to understand what other cities do. I don't know that we want to be, suddenly, we we haven't even passed this, and we're we're already known regionally as the place for the five hundred dollar parking ticket. I don't I don't. As an elected representative, I don't I don't know that I want that reputation. However, you know, I'm like looking at Tacomas. Most of the time it looks like thirty five dollars, but they're all over the map too, which I don't think is fair to the officers who are trying to write a ticket and guessing, and they literally have thirty items here. Most of them are thirty five dollars. But they're all over the place, forty two, thirty, twenty five, you know, that. And they probably have their reason, and they're probably probably a good reason. I I think we need to try to rationalize those numbers to what other folks are doing. You know, in the ballpark that accomplishes our goals. And the other thing I don't see in Tacoma, but I'm not a lawyer, so when I'm reading this, I might be missing sections, and then there's there's they're citing their code, the WAC, and the RCW. So. And and so I'm going to stay out of the.
Right, the WAC is likely the model traffic ordinance, which includes by its nature some RCWs. So you're going to see a lot of that extra citation, and it's really all one thing.
So that's what I like. I I I I think I just need a little, if we're going to pursue this, and clearly it looks like we are. I I would just like some more rationalization of the process is what I would call it. Thank you.
So it doesn't have to be here now, tonight on the dais. You will want to be sharing with the city manager what you would want to see at a future study session on this topic, and it may or may not rise to the level of priority where you see it right away. It may take a little while, but we need to have some specific direction. If there's going to be follow up. As I said, it doesn't need to happen here now, tonight on the dais, but something to communicate to the city manager so that we can form something that's useful to you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'm all about building consensus, so I need to know, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance seven nine seven? Or not? Mr. Branstad?
I'm going to move to adopt ordinance seven ninety seven.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstad and seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss that we adopt ordinance number seven nine seven. Further discussion, Mr. Branstad?
Mr. Mayor, now to be upfront, the reason that I moved to adopt it so that I can vote against it. That 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 I think that the way forward is not to try, try to, try to reshape this existing ordinance that's in front of us, but to just have it die tonight. And then move forward at whatever timeframe staff is able to bring us some information about before where we can have a meaningful study session that is based on some some data and some experience of sister sister cities in that we can have actually explored and perhaps even implemented what some of the impacts of 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 signage are to include establishing some tow away zones, which we don't need a new ordinance to do. So that was that is my my rationale today, and I would urge my fellow council members to vote nay.
Any further discussion? Well, I will just speak to the ordinance. I I'm going to vote in favor of it because I think doing something is better than nothing. We can always tweak it if we find after we get some data and maybe even have some experience that it is or isn't working or is seen as draconian. But I think that the officers came to us asking for tools. Uh, we gave them a partial tool in the tool bag. We did not advocate for, nor is it included in this ordinance, the opportunity to tow yet. But I do acknowledge the concerns of some of the neighbors who obviously have been calling three one one to express concerns to code enforcement folks that parking on certain sidewalks, rainy sidewalks, frankly, is unsightly, it's unsafe, and frankly, it's unfair. It's unfair to all those folks who bore the brunt of the construction disruption that they in their neighborhoods may have suffered, and then now they can't even walk necessarily safely on some areas because they're blocked by cars. So I am going to vote in favor of it. If it gets voted down, that's fine, but I think I want to acknowledge the the work that's been done and the need to do something as opposed to nothing. But I would also advocate not germane to this particular ordinance, but we we direct the city manager at some point to create some signage in certain areas so that that can be an additional incentive to do the right thing. So any further discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number seven nine seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. That's three to three, so it fails. So I guess we'll bring it back at another time. And hopefully with some discussion about some proper signage that's, you know, reasonable within our budget to do and and have the outcome, we hope, in terms of behavior modification. Okay, Mr. Caulfield, do we have any unfinished business?
We do not, Mayor.
Any new business?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Okay, so let's move to the reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Wanted to call upon our city attorney again to give you an update on a proposed flag policy. Again, city council asked us to take a look at this about a month or two ago, and so we have a a recommendation that we'd like to run by you this evening.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I am here to talk about a flag policy. We have practices that we followed with with regard to flags. What this policy would do, and you would adopt it by resolution, would simply be to put that in a in a position where it's firm, it's in writing, anyone can see it. It's not just the way we do things. And so the main point to take away from this is that you would never, well, maybe you would want to have it be something that people can ask for a flag to be flown. If you do that, every time you say yes or no to a flag being flown, you are exposing yourself to First Amendment scrutiny, which is very challenging to show that you weren't violating the First Amendment. And for that reason, as you can see from the different cases that are cited, what we really look for is that displaying flags is really a display of government speech. If you have chosen to fly it, fly the flag as a city, then that is within your power and authority to express yourselves as a governmental entity, and you're not going into that First Amendment arena. And that's base, the basis for this. It is crafted after some of the different policies I found looking on Municipal Research Services Center website. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Any questions? I I did read the MRSC documentation and research on this, and the proposed ordinance is very consistent with that. So thank you.
Very familiar.
Well, it's not an action update for us to take any action on a night, but thank you for the overview, and I certainly am supportive of the work in the proposed ordinance. Any other thoughts or feedback to the city manager or Ms. Walker on that? If we have some consensus to move forward, let's bring it back then to the next regular session.
We can do that at your next regular meeting, Mayor.
Great.
Just a few more updates if I if I might. First, I just want to let the council know that Port Stillicum Park Dog Park was again recognized as best of the South Sound in the magazine, South Sound Best Magazine of two thousand twenty four within the dog park category. You know, as I think you all know, that's just a absolutely fantastic amenity and facility that we have here in Lakewood, and it's been recognized in the past, and we're proud and proud of our team, Mary Dawsworth and her team for being recognized again in two thousand twenty four. Along those same lines, last week Deputy Mayor Moss communicated that she had been going to be inducted into the JBLM Civilian Hall of Fame. Congratulations Deputy Mayor for her tremendous work with the Air Force over the years, including being honorary commander. In addition, there's two other inductees. Both have Lakewood connections. The first is Bill Adamson, who is our South Sound Military and Communities Partnership Program Manager, a retired colonel. And he is being recognized for his work in support of service members and their families, and all that is you know, JBLM on our side of the fence, you know, helping them out in areas of transportation, social health, behavioral health, education, jobs, et cetera, et cetera. And then lastly, a third inductee with Lakewood connections is former council member John Simpson. John is being inducted for his role in support of First Corps going back a number of years as a as a primarily as a journalist, included being embedded with several units in Iraq on a couple of occasions as well. So all three, Deputy Mayor Moss, Bill Adamson, and John Simpson will be recognized at a special event on March twenty seventh. That'll be hosted by the First Corps Commander. And so again, just want to congratulate, since the deputy mayor is here this evening, congratulate her and the others as well. So.
That's great. Fantastic.
As it relates to your your calendar, just wanted to point it out, this Thursday, the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound is going to have their annual Legacy of Hope event at Hotel Murano, the bicentennial pavilion. I don't know if any of you will be attending. I usually I'll be attending, so if you're there, I'll look forward to seeing you. Next Tuesday, the mayor will be hosting Mayor's Coffee House at the park, at the Port Stillicum Park Pavilion, and the and the agenda topic, the item, will be our senior services programs. Next Wednesday, the twenty eighth, the city will be hosting, led by our Strategic Planning Manager, Tiffany Spears, she will be hosting an open house for the two thousand twenty four comp plan periodic update. This is the third open house, and that'll be over at the Clover Park Technical College Rotunda. That'll be from five thirty to seven P M. As we move into March, Habitat for Humanity is going to have their annual fundraising luncheon on Wednesday, March twelfth, also at the bicentennial pavilion at Hotel Murano. March fifteenth, the Ides of March, a couple of things happening. American Lake VA Medical Center is going to have a centennial celebration. I know the mayor has issued a proclamation recognizing that. And then that evening, LMCC, the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition, of which our deputy mayor is the chair and leader of that organization, is going to be hosting their second annual Dr. Claudia Thomas Community Service Award Gala at the McGavick Center. And then just the last item on March twentieth, the following week, the Tacoma Pierce County Economic Development Board will hold their annual meeting, and that'll be at the Greater Tacoma Convention and Trade Center, and the city has a table of ten. So if you're interested in sitting at that table, please let us know so we can get your get your seat reserved there. So that's kind of how things look as we look out into middle of middle of March. The last item I'd like to bring up, and perhaps, Mayor, this would be something that could transition over to council comments. Has to do with the allocation of ARPA funds from the City of Lakewood in support of Tacoma Rescue Mission's Pierce County First Village Project. If you recall back in December of two thousand twenty two, the city council appropriated, conditionally appropriated a million dollars of its ARPA funds in support of the Pierce County First Village Project for the chronically homeless, as well as addressing veterans housing as 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 well. In addition, through the motion, the the it was dependent on Pierce County securing the sufficient funds from other sources to complete Phase One of this project. We understand that Phase One consists of a hundred and fifty housing units. We had also understood that they have not yet secured full funding for the hundred and fifty units, though the expectation is that will occur sometime in two thousand twenty four. Exactly how much they have, I don't have that information, but they're almost there. That's that. That's the word that we have have received. So what Pierce County and the Tacoma Rescue Mission are asking is, since they have funding for right now for fifty units, they are asking for the City of Lakewood to release those ARPA funds sooner rather than waiting later this year when they have full funding. And if that's something that you would like to pursue, this could be placed on a future city council regular meeting for, you know, your 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 consideration and in essentially changing changing the terms. You know, a couple of things. One of the questions that we asked is, is this project in jeopardy of not moving forward? The answer that we have received is it is moving forward. It's going through environmental review and permitting and things along those lines. So the response to that is yes, it's expected to move forward. When we inquired about is the full funding expected to be secured? The answer on that we have received is is yes as well. A couple of things for this body to remember is that you have appropriated these million dollars, but if for some reason, if for some reason in two thousand twenty four we learn that this project is not moving forward, you will have an opportunity to reappropriate those dollars for something else within the City of Lakewood. However, you won't, under federal, under federal law, you only have until twelve thirty one, two thousand twenty four to do that.
Twenty five, doesn't it?
Nope, twenty four, two thousand twenty four, to appropriate those dollars.
Okay.
However, there's another two years through end of twenty six for the receiving agencies to spend the money. So what that means is if you release the monies now or anytime in two thousand twenty four, and the project is not moving forward, you at least have an opportunity to reappropriate the monies. But also just remember, if you appropriate the, if you release the monies now and the project continues into twenty five, and for some reason, if the project does not move forward, the good news is that whatever the agency has to send the money back to us, but then the city is obligated to send the money back to the federal government. It can't be reappropriated. So that's just something to to keep in mind. My recommendation, based on our conversations with Pierce Pierce County and the Tacoma Rescue Mission, is that you do revise your previous motion and release the monies now to the TRM so that they can move forward with the fifty housing units that they do have the ability to build based on, you know, once they get through all of their permitting process. If for some reason that doesn't move forward, one of the things you might want to do is attach a timeline to a change, and and if you were to do that, I would recommend either October thirty first or November fifteenth to give you time at the end of the year to reappropriate those monies. Again, just in case, you always want to plan for contingencies, just in case the project doesn't move forward. So. I I know it's a bit convoluted. I hope I hope you're all tracking that.
That's clear. Mr. Branstad has a question.
Yeah, well, thank you, Ms. Caulfield, and I think that that, you know, you 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 it's a good explanation of the of the situation that we are. You know, I, Mr. Mayor, I would just suggest that this is an action that we ought to pursue. That I think the that while the the scope of the project in the terms of the pared down first phase is fewer than was originally proposed, the commitment to move forward beyond the first fifty and beyond, I think is still there by the county. They've passed some new taxes that are going to provide some 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 funding in in this in this realm so that I'm not concerned. some 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 funding in in this in this realm so that I'm not concerned that they weren't going on. In terms of timing, when we were released the money and do that, the one milestone that we perhaps should meet, because, you know, this the project seems to meet all of what we were hoping for, you know, this million dollars that we allocated, we originally wanted to be used for some homeless facilities serving veterans in the City of Lakewood. And we didn't get anyone to propose anything viable. And so we we moved on to this project, which is close by. And it was, we really had a number of concerns, but the the two that I would say were the most significant to us were that we wanted to make sure that there were going to be some service to veterans. And the commitment is that twenty percent of this first phase one would go to house veterans, to provide them a a stable, ongoing place to live. And the other thing that was really important to us was was environmental. And we were really important in emphasizing that we did not want to invest in anything that was not going to be served by sanitary sewers. That that this project has moved to both of those things to 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 meet them. And the only milestone that is out there is to begin spending the money. And we actually been moving on the project. The Rescue Mission has to get their conditional use permit approved, which is applied for and is in the process. So there's going to be a hearing and so it will be not far far down to where that decision and a positive decision in that regard, I think should could be a single signal to us that we could move ahead and release those dollars because that's also a signal that the Rescue Mission can actually start to spend them. So that would be my timeline and my recommendation of what we do.
Remind me on the timeline comment.
My timeline is based upon the approval of the conditional use permit.
Okay, got it. So in other words, if it's not approved through the court processes, I say, as Mr. Caulfield indicated, October thirty first, we would have the opportunity to reconsider the allocation.
Yeah, that's my idea. And and I expect this conditional use permit will come to a a resolution. I mean, I don't have any reason to think that the conditional use permit will not be approved by at the at the county level. But it has to go through a hearing process and 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 there are, there are people in the county that are opposed to it that will raise some objections to it. But I, you know, I think that if it if it clears that hurdle, then the project can move forward and can can use an infusion of dollars.
Yeah, I think we're getting to the same point. I am. My thought is we will know on or before October thirty first, which should give us enough time to pull it back. If for whatever reason, the project doesn't proceed forward. Mr. Caulfield.
Just to point out, Councilmember Branstad's comment, so the conditional use permit, if approved by the hearing examiner, would expect it to be ready by the end of June, early July.
Correct. Mr. Lauricella.
So as part of what was approved originally, there was that twenty percent prioritization for veterans, correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Lauricella, and that's still in there. And Tacoma Rescue Mission is still committed to adhering to that.
Okay, and that would exist for those first fifty units as well.
Affirmative, Councilmember. Yeah, they were very clear on that. Yes.
I, my opinion on it is we entered into this contract with an agreement that they would have a hundred and fifty units. That's what we committed to working with. I'd like to wait until October to actually hand that off for them to spend because that's what they committed to. And that would give us a better idea of their ability to hit that target. Thank you.
I I think the reason they're coming, I respect that comment, and I think the reason they're coming to us is they need to have some certainty of the level of funding to get the project moving forward, at least to the first fifty units. But I I hear what you're saying. Mr. Caulfield.
I I would, I don't have, I would speculate, they probably just need some cash flow. And, you know, you're a body that has been very supportive of this project from the get go. And that's pure speculation on my part, but just in my conversations with them, to get the project up off the ground. Once they get the permit approval, because once they get the permit approval, if it's approved, then they get into site development, so they'll be bringing in engineers, architects, et cetera. And they they they're very anxious to get going on this. And so I would see them using this money first to get that off the ground.
And we want to try to invest it as best we can. Yes, Mr. Lauricella.
Thank you. How large is this project? How big of a percentage of it is our contribution?
Oh, that's small. Pretty small.
Yeah, it's one million out of, I think the last estimate was about twenty five million, Councilmember Lauricella. Yeah.
At least twenty five. Yeah.
Right, but they're saying they need our million to get rolling.
Speculation on my part. So I'm speculating on my part.
Thank you.
Because I don't know how much has been released by the other agencies.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know that.
Mr. Boki, do you have any information on that? I know it was important to them to reach out to the city manager to make this request, just to clarify getting the funds released sooner than later. And I believe the county is comfortable that it can commit to getting the first fifty funded through the phase one piece. And that's why they wanted to have us be clear so that there wouldn't be a further challenge to this piece of the funding being allocated.
Yeah, it it's well in excess of twenty odd million. I think that the first ARPA appropriation and the last by any of them at the county was in excess of twenty million. And they've spent quite a bit. I mean, they've spent, because they purchased the property and they've done a lot of preliminary, you know, the engineering, all this and prepping for what Mr. Caulfield talked about. So they've spent, and they've rid five, six million dollars. I mean, I might I might be wrong. I haven't seen any numbers recently, but.
And I'll just point out the county did pony up three and a half million for the loss of project in our city. So, you know, we want to be a a regional player as well on this issue that'll impact us favorably. So that's my thought. Thoughts, comments, any other further direction for Mr. Caulfield and Deputy Mayor?
As long as we have the a period of time when we can reclaim the dollars of the investment, I'm good with that.
So like the Octoberish timeframe, because that should be enough time hopefully for us to react if we needed to.
So so Mayor, what what's the direction? Do I want to bring back a revised motion to release?
And then we can, we can get further information if we need to, to address Mr. Lauricella's comment. But I think that, yes, bring back the revised motion.
Based on fifty, based on fifty units and then attaching a a no later than date on on those fifty units of, do you want mid-November or October thirty one?
I'd say October thirty one, give us more time. So we're just saying that they're commencing the first fifty units of phase one, right? As long as they're commencing that and working on it, because the the land use piece, the conditional use permit piece should be done by June, July-ish timeframe.
I don't know. Well, yeah, the permits, yes. Well, the the
Permits, excuse me.
The approval, the approval.
Approval, yeah.
You know, now that I'm thinking about it, if you put a date on it, because they, because they're ready to go right now with fifty units, so they would want the million dollars right now. So then I think you would need to have some kind of a a a date of October thirty first, you know, reporting back the status of the project or something along those lines.
And we'll know if it's a no-go or a go.
There we go. That's correct. Okay.
Yeah.
Let me follow up with the county on that as well. I'll report back to you.
Well, it's a good question. So Councilmember Lauricella questioned that if the county were to spend the money in the interim and the project, for whatever reason, didn't move forward, then what happens?
I I don't have an answer for you other than, yeah, it's a sunk cost, but I would presume that they're not going to move forward. They have the funding for the fifty units right now. So really, what what they're hedging on is the approval of the conditional use permit, which again, they'll know by hopefully the if if it's approved by the end of June, early July.
Okay. I think that's
Is that as clear as mud or?
It's a little, we might want to reach back and get some clarity before we bring
Let us do that. Yeah, let let us do that. Let us do that.
So that'll be helpful.
But what I do hear is you are open to revising your motion to allow the release of the million dollars based on fifty units as opposed to the full hundred and fifty units on phase one. That's kind of the larger policy issue. Okay.
I think so.
Okay.
At least there's consensus for it. And we'll have some questions answered, though.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
And that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Very good. So let's turn to council comments and we'll start with Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my my first question is for you, Mr. Mayor. On March fifteenth, in addition to the items that the city manager mentioned, there is the Centennial Celebration at the VA American Lake Campus. And were you planning to be there to to issue that proclamation at that event or?
I am planning to be there for that. I was a VA kid that grew up on various Veterans Administration domiciliaries around this country. And so it would be meaningful to me to be there.
Okay, I just, just trying to confirm that there's a going to be someone who's intending to be the voice.
Yep.
I'm trying to be able to go and do that.
Be pleased to do that.
I I I think that it was really appropriate that our proclamation for David Buhr today. I think, you know, and and while the proclamation ran through an extensive list of of accomplishments and 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 impacts that he had in the city. There is a one impact, but wasn't in the proclamation that I I I I think is is very important because we pride ourselves as a city, as a as an organization of, as as Don Anderson said, say that we we punch above our level. Okay. You know, we really have a a real impact regionally in that, more so than a typical city of our size would 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 typically have. And Dave Buhr has a lot to do with that because Dave Buhr is one of the guys who, although we go and do things that that did a lot of that punching, whether, you know, and he is, he is, he was at the point of where his his reputation and his acknowledgement of his things, you know, when he spoke and he was the City of Lakewood speaking, carried a great deal of weight, whether it was being Olympia or or regionally in the in the South Sound, to be able to go and do that. And as such, he did a lot for the reputation of the city, you know, to be able to go and do that. And it's one of those things that I, when I, when I, when I, when I think about his impact in in terms of doing it, he is that has positioned us to be impactful for our citizens in part because we have had, had, has him being impactful and and being recognized far beyond the the walls of this building. There was a a notice that came out today from the Puget Sound Energy, you know, where Puget Sound Energy is looking to, asking the Utilities and Trades Commission to increase the rates for both natural gas and electricity. And and the 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 rates are not just small incremental to keep up with inflation rates, but they're 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 asking for significant rates to include upwards of upwards of twenty percent in for some categories of 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 users of electricity and doing all that. And 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 they cite a lot of reasons for that that include environmental, that include responsing, responding to regulatory things to be able to go and do that. And the original notice was just sort of a notification that they've submitted that request and but with a note that down the road, there's going to be the opportunity for cities and individuals and others to make comments to the UTC, which has some approval authority for that type of utility. You know, it's one of those things to do that. And so I I just suggest that that while that window to comment is still in the future, and I think it's something that we should really look at because it's going to be, if it's approved as written, significantly impactful on both businesses and persons. But on the other hand, if it's going to be used for something that is going to be valuable in terms of the long-term growth of the city, you know, we may want to support it and there may be some middle ground of some things that we think are good and some things are not. And we may want to try to get some more information from someone from Puget Sound Energy coming and giving us a a presentation as this moves forward over probably eighteen month window or something like that. So I I would just say that that that's that's an emerging issue that we need to be forward. And it's it's not one of those that to be be quiet about and wait and see what happens because it's going to have an impact on on businesses and folks in the community. And if we think it's a good idea, then we need to help make the case in the community. And if we think that there's, it's excessive, then we need to be looking, be the voice of our community, making the case to the UTC. And, Ms. Mayor, I thank you for your input and follow up on my regarding my question about what really is the status on the on the Crisis Stabilization Center. You know, and to get back, that was, there's a great deal of fanfare three years ago of when that was established and it was viewed as kind of a prototype that could be used around the state to help provide for behavioral health services to people to be able to do that. And as I learned in response to my question, it was something that was that was utilized by our police department and behavioral health contact teams to be able to go and do that. And I'm glad to hear that it wasn't Pierce County pulling the plug on it, but it was the operator of it. And and so that means that maybe the facility exists and it may be easier to find another operator in that Pierce County can be going on it as opposed to it's just disappearing to be able to go and do that. Because it's it's the kind of thing that's needed, not the kind of thing that needs to go away to be able to go and do that. And I guess the last thing that I would would comment on is the the Fort Stillicum Dog Park again, being recognized as as one of the, you know, the 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 best in the region. And I think it's, this is something that has become a yearly event. But I, but I would note that that that's a, there are kudos to go to our Parks Department for managing that. But also kudos to go to the volunteer organizations that assist our Parks Department in managing and caring for that facility and 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 seeing that it is really focused on the dogs and their dog owners and their needs and perception to do that. So I appreciate that honor coming our way.
Very good. Well, thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just earlier today, earlier tonight, went to the school levy celebration. And that was great to see people out there. There was a lot of support for the levy that looks like it's going to pass or did pass essentially. But and then we were, the council was applauded by Superintendent Banner for he recognized, you know, our efforts in helping support them. So he appreciated appreciated that. And then a couple of things this week, I have a ride along, so I'm excited to and then a couple of things this week, uh, I have a ride-along, so I'm excited to, uh, excited to go on, to go on the ride-along this Thursday. Um, looking to, you know, get some boots on the ground and learn what's going on out there and see, you know, if we can bring some stuff back to help be, uh, more impactful for our police department. Um, I have PSRC on Thursday and then for next, next week is, uh, next Monday is my daughter's birthday and so I will not be here. I'll be celebrating her. So that's my.
Very good. Yep. Thanks. Just saying on the ride-along, uh, enjoy it, but it's not a real ride-along until you stay out till two-thirty in the morning and then get up to go to your day job at seven. So you just make that, that work for your schedule.
Yeah. Not quite scheduled to be out that late, but, uh, we'll see what we get into.
All right. Very good. Councilmember Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. Couple of items, uh, I'll let you speak to the PCRC meeting last week. I think it went fairly well and actually, um, Planning Commission is Wednesday night and their, their main item of business is, uh, public comment on the expansion of the residential target area for the multifamily tax exemption program. That's in, in the down to add additional, to basically get it to match with our downtown sub-area plan. Um, so that public hearing is, uh, Wednesday night at six-thirty. They're also going to look at, uh, draft by annual reviews of the downtown and station district sub-areas and update the twenty-twenty-four Tillicum Woodbrook sub-area plan. So that's, that's their discussion. Um. Great to hear that the levy passed or great to see that the levy passed. Um. Wow, see that the Crisis Stabilization Center is closing. Really a major piece of, along with Well Found, which is, you know, working its way up to capacity. The Crisis Stabilization Center plays a role in that system. Um, it's not a hospital. They don't stay there for a long time. So it's disappointing and I think it's just another reminder that the, the the repairs, the rebuild, I think of the, of our mental health system in the state of Washington, which had been neglected really for um, certainly the majority of our lives. Um, because I remember in the nineteen-seventies as a kid growing up here, they were in the midst of deinstitutionalization and they were closing places and, um, they had very high hopes that that would work and it, and, and, and and to some extent it hasn't, right? I think we recognize that now and the state is investing a lot of money. The state invested a lot of money in this crisis stabilization facility along with the county. So hopefully somebody will take it over and be able to, to operate it because the, the, the system has to work with all the constituent pieces of that system working, right? They, from, from getting picked up on the street to getting stabilized to perhaps maybe even go into an evaluation treatment facility to a hospital and then to some kind of housing. So disappointed to hear that, but with hopes that things will, will work. Um. Yeah, I, it's hard. You know, you run, I, I'm a government employee by, you know, I was in the private sector for a long time. I was a government employee now for the last, you know, almost two decades and you run across folks like Dave Buhr who just did such an outstanding job for so long. And, you know, I know it's his job, but he really, really is in that Hall of Fame. For me, anyway, you, you meet people in, in my day job and this job, um, where you see him and you're just like, wow, you know, if we were all like you, right? And, and he, he embodies that. He also in my mind embodies, he's always had his eyes on the prize because he, when he got here, he clearly knew what the issues were with Lakewood. Um, clearly they were conveyed well by the, 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 the initial city councils, including Mayor Harrison. And, and he, even to this day, I think is working to, to execute those, those policies and those needs and, and, um, certainly for this council also. So I just high praise, you know, praise just doesn't seem for all the, for all the work that he put in for this city for so long and thus so many hours. And the, the improvements that have been made that he was a major part of. And, um, you know, you, you don't last that long in that position without being a good team player, but also being effective. And I, and, and I'm just so, just so impressed with him, uh, over the years and his ability to get things done. So certainly a, a, a real loss, but a well-deserved retirement for him. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, General Harrison, uh, I, I didn't have a chance to know him well, but I met him, uh, in two thousand and one. I was twenty years old. I was a barista at the Starbucks at a hundredth and Bridgeport. And he came in every day to get his cup of coffee and the, the man commanded a room and it was clear that he had this kindness and care for his community that just you could tell. He, he was someone to know and someone who really cared about what we do here. And he, he paved a path for all of us uh, to try and continue his legacy to serve our community. So I really appreciated that about him. Dave Buhr, uh, only had a chance to work with him briefly, um, but coming in, he had a reputation as a, as a guy who finds a way to get things done to serve our community. And in the time that I did get to spend working in and around this area with him, uh, that was really clear that he cared about our community as well. And he's left a lasting legacy with our city that's going to continue for a long time. Uh, General Harrison, Dave Buhr, others, the, I, I mentioned it to the city manager earlier that they would be on the Mount Rushmore of the city of Lakewood. There's room for more, of course, but I appreciate, uh, everything both of them did. Uh, I was happy to see progress on the interim Lakewood library that, uh, they broke ground and were, and were moving forward. Uh, at the same time, I was sad and disappointed to see the removal of the, the Madrona Groves there. Uh, it would have been great if we could find a way to work around those and and keep those as part of the, part of the architecture. But I understand that request came in later than when things were launched and it would have required rebidding and redoing a number of things. So while it's great to see the progress, it's, it's balanced with the loss of some habitat that was, that was important. Uh, I will be attending the South Sound nine-one-one meeting tomorrow, uh, and taking a tour of their facilities, uh, looking forward to, uh, to the behind-the-scenes look at what they do there. Uh, and finally, uh, I was, uh, I was happy to see the work being done on the baseball fields at Fort Stillcome Park. They look really nice. Those, those turf, uh, pieces look really good and I'm excited to, to go to some games this year, uh, to see the, the Pierce College folks playing. So.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the celebration of the passing of the levy and, um, um, Superintendent Banner asked that we pass it on that all of our citizens, thank you for voting for them. They had a turnout of fifty-nine point fifty-four percent. And that's the highest they've had a vote in over twenty years. So appreciate that. The dog park has always been a jewel in our community. So congratulations on that. I did attend the crab feed, uh, Saturday night and ate lots of crap. It was really good. I had a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. So Mr. Branstadter was the Lakewood winner. So we talked to him about our next get-together. Uh, Joe Harrison was one of my mentors along with Dr. Claudia Thomas. He was, he convinced me that I needed to be here. And I said, no, as long as I could, but then they got me. So he, he, he does leave a legacy behind that we will never forget. So we appreciate everything that he's done. Dave Buhr, I've worked with him for the last, I've worked with him. I've known him for the last fourteen years and, um, awesome. Awesome. I love to see people that are really dedicated to their work and care about his fellow workers. So that was great. Uh, tomorrow morning I will be attending the Military Affairs, uh, meeting at Tacoma County Country Club for the Chamber. And then, uh, I'm busy preparing for LMCC's gala. It's coming up really fast. So I'm looking forward to seeing everybody there.
Which game?
Which one? That other one. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, it's been a busy week. Uh, hopefully you're getting your, your money's worth, uh, out of me this week. Um, Tuesday I was at the Tillicum Neighborhood Association meeting. It was fairly well-attended. Uh, there were a couple of issues about derelict houses that, uh, they raised and code enforcement is working on that, but, uh, they are an active group. On Thursday, as Mr. Boki indicated, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council meeting. They also included within the meeting their general assembly. And in years past, as you may recall, we always used to have a kind of a big dinner and we had a lot of city uh, folks there, including Mr. Buhr, who would always come to that event. And that's the event where they typically kind of go around the county and everyone says, I'm so-and-so from the great city of whatever, and we're known for gooey ducks or whatever it is. It's kind of a funny little anecdotal evening. So I said, Mr. Boki and I are from the great city of Lakewood. We're the tired council members who want this meeting to end. Uh, didn't quite say it that way, but it's what we were thinking. Yeah. But they did pass their, their annual work plan and their budget and they're moving forward with their, uh, their planning work that they do. And so it was, it was a good meeting, better than the prior one. Um, on Friday, I enjoyed, uh, Lakewood Rotary where our own Economic Development Manager, Becky Newton, did a, a fine presentation on all things economic development here in the city of Lakewood. And I can tell you from reports that folks were impressed with the breadth and depth of the work that Lakewood is doing in promoting good, uh, economic development here in the city. So that was a, a, a good event. On this Friday, I'm going to a, actually this week, I'm going to this mayor's exchange. I have an AWC event down in Olympia. So I'll be there, uh, with apparently other mayors in Washington on part of Thursday and it looks like Wednesday evening on Friday. I'm back here for the Tacoma Pierce County Clean Building Symposium, where I was asked to be on a panel to talk about climate planning and action and, uh, explaining sort of Lakewood's role and what we've done with our own, own climate energy, uh, and climate change chapter. So I'll fill you in on that after I participate next week. Tonight, Bill Harrison and the recognition that will be forthcoming. Just so you know, I got a late sort of a news flash as I was coming to this meeting. There will be a memorial celebration of life on Saturday, April sixth at the Lakewood Baptist Church. Time is like maybe ten, maybe eleven to be, uh, solidified, but I wanted to give you kind of a warning order on that. Uh, the director of the services wanted to know if we wanted to reserve some seating for council members current and past. And I indicated that would likely be appropriate. So Mr. Caulfield and I can follow back up with Hank Kearns and the family, just to make sure that we're being consistent with their desires and wishes. But that's the date currently set. April sixth. Uh, I think around ten or eleven in the morning sometime. So as soon as I know more, I'll, I'll send it out to everyone. And, and like many of you who knew, uh, the general, uh, General Bill or Mayor Bill, uh, depending on which hat he wore, he was a tremendous, was a tremendous human being. And not only obviously was a fine and accomplished military leader, the first mayor of the city of Lakewood, but he was just a fine human being. Uh, he took me under his tutelage like he did the deputy mayor way back when, and probably two thousand five or six, when I first started looking at, at being encouraged to consider running for the city council. And one of my memorable trips, he picked me up in his, his, uh, I think he had a Ford Bronco or Blazer or something at the time, and he would drive us around the city of Lakewood and explain this is what it is, but this is what it can be and should be. And I remember my first visit to Springbrook over to an area called Fur Acres. And those of you who are fairly new, uh, won't have any recollection of what it was. But when Bill Harrison drove me to Fur Acres, I thought I was in a foreign war zone. It was a dilapidated, horribly decrepit mobile home park that had electrical lines like running around the ground, uh, completely deplorable situation, circumstances. And he said, we are going to make change here. And Springbrook Park, of course, you know, has grown into great, uh, fruition. That now is a beautiful new apartment complex, completely cleaned up. We've expanded Springbrook Park, not only through the efforts of the city, but the efforts of other, uh, nonprofit organizations like Rotary and others and so many others. And now it's a place to be proud of. I mean, is there work to do? Yes. But did councils be forced, plant a seed and a vision to make significant change? Absolutely. And he was a guy who was all about vision and wanted to make sure you knew uh, that change needed to happen and where in the city it needed to happen. And we went all around, uh, on many occasion. And so I really appreciated his mentorship and planting that seed that we can make change happen if you dedicate and put the resources and the intent into making it happen. So for me, that came from Bill Harrison and Claudia Thomas and so many others, Doug Richardson, Don Anderson, the like. But Dave Buhr was a part and parcel to much of that change, right? And we recognized him tonight, uh, because he deserved it. He is an incredible, another incredible human being. And as I indicated, uh, I first started working with Dave as a member of the Planning Commission back in, I think, two thousand and six to two thousand and nine, before I won my first term for election. And Dave was incredible to educate us on the issues that were important to the city and provide us the feedback we needed in response to many questions to help us generate recommendations for the city council on all these land is, i- use issues that the Planning Commission deals with. He's just been tremendous for the city. So I applaud his well-deserved retirement on that. And other than that, the only thing I wanted to say is, you know, public comment, uh, sometimes can be, uh, as constructive as we might hope, but tonight I thought was great. And I really appreciated especially the comments by Jonathan Garcia, uh, commenting on Lakewood youth baseball because that's a perspective we don't often get. It's one who's actually doing the work with kids who provides positive affirmation that the opportunities provided Lakewood youth are going to be affordable, which is what we all want. And that they applaud the opportunity for youth to use the new ball fields that we all spent a ton of time with Mary Dodsworth and Mr. Caulfield, planning, preparing, getting the funding, you know, getting the grant and now putting it into fruition. So again, like a good general, Mayor Harrison would say, you planted the seeds well, it's coming to fruition and the people are going to enjoy it. So I appreciated that comment tonight. Okay, we got lots of work to do. Thank you all for your attention tonight. We're now adjourned.